Hey, the time now is 5:35. I would like to officially start our meeting. Good evening, everyone. My name is Ayobami Bell Torrance. Would like to thank you for joining us for our second public hearing that was held today. Following today's presentation, you will have the opportunity to make your comments for public record. If time permits, excuse me, we will also be able to address some comments relating to today's presentation. I would like to now turn it over to our Executive Manager of Service Development and Scheduling, Mr. Steve Patrigny.
Yes, good evening, everyone. We are here for, to discuss our proposed service changes for November 15th, 2021. That would be the effective date of the changes. And there, these are draft service changes or proposal. There will be a service change on November 15th regardless, but, uh, but we are here to take comments on our proposal. Okay, for those of you who are not familiar with Zoom, your participation in this Zoom meeting grants permission for your name, image, and likeness, as well as audio and video recordings to be used by D-Dot. Your mute button is automatically set to mute. So you will need to unmute yourself before you make a comment or ask a question, and then re-mute yourself after you make your comments. There's a little raised hand logo. It's a little cartoon of a hand that you can click on, and that means that, uh, that you want to speak. And then you can, when you're called on, you can speak and unmute yourself. Special instructions for those using dial-in feature. Those of you who are dialing in on the telephone will not have the full functionality of Zoom. But if you push a star nine, that serves the same function as the raised hand feature in Zoom. And there's a little chat symbol shaped kind of like the, uh, when people talk in the comic strips, you know, those little bubbles that come out of their mouths. So that's what you push on. If you want to submit questions or comments to the D-Dot staff, and they're also visible to everyone at the, uh, at the meeting. So before asking a question or comment, before to, be sure to unmute your audio, state your name and an organization. If you're representing an organization, and, uh, and then following your comments, mute yourself again, re-mute yourself. Okay. So, uh, okay, today's service challenge is that D-Dot bus service is scheduled to be frequent, convenient, and reliable. But we have not been able to meet that promise. We were here to change that. So those of us who've been on the bus recently know that what is published in the schedule is not always what we see on the street. So our goal here is that we are rat sizing service schedules based on the current ridership, the number of buses available, and the number of operators available. So equipment and personnel. The result will be that service is a service that is reliable and comes when it's expected. For example, the RAP 3 Grand River is scheduled for 15-minute service, but only 75% of the weekday service was operated in July. So when a trip is missing, a 15-minute wait becomes 30 minutes. Or if consecutive trips are missed, it can become even longer. So even though the schedule says 15 minutes, we know the service is not every 15 minutes. So the service solution in the near term is to make service changes to rat size the system. Even though the buses may be scheduled to come less often, the actual service being provided on the street will be more consistent and reliable than it is today. So the goals of this project here to, uh, for the November changes, first of all, to keep access to destinations that are served by the system today, preferably within walking distance or half a mile, which is a 10-minute walk for most people. Keep service hours by time of day. So first trips, last trips, the span from early morning through evening. Try to preserve that, and all routes will be scheduled.
Did we lose your audio? Okay, well, it looks like we're having a technical difficulty with Steve. Let's see if we can give him a moment. Gina, is anyone prepared from your scheduling team to continue the presentation if need be? We can't get the presentation back up on our end if that's, if necessary.
Looks like he's joining.
Okay.
Steve, you're back on, but you're muted.
And he may need to, let's see, we might have to, please bear with us.
Share screen. Bear with us, technical difficulties. Okay, and here we are. Share. Okay, so everyone can see me now? Okay, we're back?
We're back. Thank you.
We're back. Okay, technical difficulties. Okay, that only lasted about three minutes, thankfully. Okay, so we have, uh, these routes here, these are weekday frequency changes. So you can see that all of the proposed frequencies are numbers like 20, 30, and 60, meaning that they're divisible into an hour, meaning that the bus would come roughly the same time every hour. And, uh, so some routes are less, most of the routes on this list are less frequent, but there's a few of them that are actually more frequent because we're trying to round them to the, uh, to the clock headways, such as the Mac Bus 35 becomes 30, just run it every 30 minutes all the time. So, uh, but routes that are not on this list will continue to operate based on the emergency COVID changes that were instituted a year ago, a year, about a year and a half ago last March. So if it's not on this list, it would stay on into the current schedules, which are emergency schedules. Then we have a little map here showing the frequency of the different routes. And, um, you can see the 20 or less. Uh, these are daytime weekday frequencies. 20 or less are the dark blue. 21 to 30 is the gray. And then you have 31 to 60 with the yellow, greater than 45 is the orange, and discontinued is the dark red. So, uh, similar to the other chart, we have reduced frequencies on Saturdays. So, um, these routes are becoming less frequent and, uh, based on this proposal. And they're also on clock headways, which means we have 30s and 60s. And as I mentioned before, if it's not on the list, it's staying with the current emergency schedules. So here's the Saturday frequency map. You can see more yellow and, uh, and orange and, um, and less of the dark blue. And then we have Sundays. These routes are proposed to have frequency changes on Sundays. And, um, some of them are becoming more frequent, in fact, and becoming, uh, the 30, 60 frequencies allow us to do more interlining, which can in fact save buses. And it also helps us to coordinate transfers. Because if the buses come to the same place every hour at the same time, it's easier to schedule, uh, that you transfer is more convenient. So here's a proposed Sunday frequency map. And then we have, uh, suspend operation on specific routes. So on these three routes, Route 1, Route 2, Route 9, we are eliminating the overnight service. So no trips will start between 1:00 AM and 3:00 AM, seven days a week, uh, in this proposal. And these three routes have very light ridership during, during the overnight hours. Also, we are proposing to suspend service on three low-performing routes. Route 11 Clermont, the 26 Junction, and the 47 Tireman. These routes together account for less than 1% of average daily boardings. And, and also, the vast majority, over 99%, will have access to another service within walking distance. And that's based on the bus stops that people use now, and how far they would have to walk to get to the bus stops that would still be in service on other routes. A simplified trip pattern. This means that instead of having one pattern during rush hour that goes to one destination, and another pattern during, uh, non-rush hours that goes to another destination, it would be the same all day. So we would have, we would run the midday patterns all day long on weekdays and weekends. So for the RAP 38, that means we would not run the service between French and Gratchit to Hazen, Hazen Eight Mile Road. All trips would end at French and Gratchit. That whole segment only has seven people boarding every day. So, and all of those boardings are within a half a mile of another route. Then we have the 43 Schoolcraft. So everything east of Manchester, that's just a rush hour extension. We would not run that anymore. We would end all the trips at Manchester and Woodward. So, uh, there's only four people a day that get on, on that whole segment. All the trips you run out there only carry four people. So very few people are impacted, and, uh, and there are other routes in the area. How long will these changes be in effect? We are actively recruiting throughout the metro area for both bus operators and bus mechanics. We are planning to start restoring service levels in early 2022 as a first step. However, there is something called the Comprehensive Operational Analysis, or COA, in which we completely reimagine public transit in Detroit through public participation and through studying exactly where people are using the bus today. Uh, so, uh, we, we have, uh, you know, we can get bus stop boardings at every stop because we have, uh, automatic passenger counter equipment and, uh, and AVL equipment, uh, automatic vehicle locator equipment. So through our automated systems, we know where people are getting on and aren't getting on. So, uh, and we also know that travel patterns have changed over the years. People aren't traveling the same way they used to. They're not going to office jobs downtown that go from 8:00 to 5:00. A lot of them have non-traditional schedules. A lot of them work outside of downtown. A lot of, uh, most of our riders are not in office jobs. So, um, they have different, you know, uh, we have a lot of non-traditional commutes. So, uh, uh, we would like to have the bus system that Detroit needs, not the one that we have now. So be ready to share your ideas on how to improve public transit. We will be starting community conversations in early 2022, and we want your participation. And, uh, and there's the website for bus operators and bus mechanics, uh, people who want to work for D-Dot. Uh, this presentation will be available online. So you can always download this part. You can look back at all the service changes we proposed. You can read them over, go, go over them, and also, uh, give this to your friends about, um, uh, working for D-Dot. Next steps, the deadline to submit public comments on the November service change proposals is two weeks from today, September 15th. Submit your comments by emailing them to ddotcomments@detroitmi.gov, or you can call customer service and state that you are making a public comment. So these are public comments on the service change package that we are proposing. And, uh, we will also be taking comments immediately after this meeting. And, uh, following that, the public hearing will formally close, and then you will have a chance to ask questions of staff who are on this call, preferably questions related to November service changes and other things that we mentioned today in the presentation. So, uh, I'm going to turn this back over to Ayobami, and I will stop sharing the screen right now. Here we go. Okay, back to you.
Thanks, Steve. As I mentioned before we take our first call. Before we call our first person, I would like to remind you that this is our comments for the public records. So that, um, please, again, keep those comments related to the proposed service changes. We ask that you please state your first and last name before you make your comments. You will have two minutes. We will let you know once that time is up, and we ask that you please respect that time, or you may be muted. And we will not, as Steve mentioned, we will not be responding to any comments during this portion of the meeting. With that, I would like to call our colleague, Kristen.
The first hand up I see is Cunningham. Please unmute yourself.
Michael Cunningham, brother Cunningham, how you doing, everybody? Good to see you. It's not your fault. Again, uh, it's the higher-ups. But I, what I would like to see, since I'm out and about, is, is, uh, there's a digital divide in regards to these changes. You guys already have your, your hands full, but maybe with ARP funds, American Rescue Plan can, uh, outside agency, similar to handbills, the same folks that do the handbills for grocery stores and things of that nature. I know there's one in Highland Park, and they do Livonia, they do all over the place. Is it permitted that a contractor can give out information on one side, talking about hiring D-Dot drivers? And, uh, the compensation on the other side, talking about the changes. That is at State Fairgrounds, Rosa Parks, St. John, wherever there is a, uh, uh, what, Grand River and Seven Mile or Telegraph up there. Wherever there's a, uh, a lot of transit where people can, uh, see what's going on. Because there is a digital divide, and they can go on Facebook and et cetera, and we know this. We, we do know that there is a digital divide. And you have to meet people where they are. More hands-on flyers, better yet, more, uh, uh, onboard signs about the changes coming. About D-Dot hiring over the intercom on the buses. How easy it is, some testimonials. I mean, more aggressive with those ARP funds and money talks. This is America. And I don't know if it's permitted to ARP funds, $2,000 signing bonuses, something of that nature, $3,000 signing bonuses. Smart Bus pays 17, starting off. I think we're paying 15. To be transparent, it really doesn't affect me much, but I care about my people like you did as well.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. That's your time.
Thank you. Uh, the next hand up I see is Lisa Franklin. Um, Ms. Franklin, it seems like we're having the issue where you have an older version of Zoom. If we can do what we did last time, and, uh, you can call and use a different device, we can make sure you have your opportunity to speak. Uh, in the meantime, let's go to Lorraine, who I believe is, whoops, sorry, one second. Lorraine, who I believe is Ms. Stewart.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Um, I just want to say we need to get service back up to power. It's too many people not getting to work on time. Um, I know you can't use the American Rescue Funds for, uh, giving, uh, hazard pay to the drivers, but somewhere in this budget, you got to give some kind of hazard pay or incentive for people to come and work for D-Dot. Like Cunningham said, smart is paying $17 an hour, and you starting in less than 14, 15, right at 15. I think 23 is your highest, but you gotta do something to bring these drivers in. When they can go somewhere else and get paid $15 an hour and not come to D-Dot. Um, I know service, they say they're gonna redo it in 2022, but cutting service on certain lines is just not feasible because it's gonna put a hardship on people that got to get to those stops, and they got to go somewhere else to get to. Please take emphasis of giving drivers more money, some kind of signing bonus or something to get these drivers in here, because we need them desperately. You're at a low already. Uh, uh, thank you, and please do something. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Uh, Renard, you're up next.
Good evening. Can you all hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, my name's, hi, my name is Renaud Shesky. I'm a lifelong D-Dot bus rider. I live in District 6 of Detroit. I am, um, going to just say I'm very concerned about these proposed cuts that are slated for D-Dot in the, um, I'd say suspension of Clermont and other sort of routes like the, um, Junction, and also the Tireman route is about to. I'm really worried about the impact this is going to have on residents that use those routes. We need to put some publication out, um, in terms of what are some of your routes that, uh, people can take that are going to be impacted by it. So that's a communication task. The other ask is, do these proposed service changes reflect the actual level of service that we've been experiencing this entire year, especially for those along the Jefferson Number 9 that have been waiting hours during the weekday? So how can you even promise these level, uh, these levels of service that are going to be reduced? I wonder if it's just reflecting the actual schedule. And during the pandemic, since 2020, we've been asking for updated schedules and things of that sort. And all of us have noticed that there's no buses to this. And thirdly, the financial part of this. We have ARP dollars. How can you justify these cuts with American Rescue Plan act dollars coming in from the RTA to D-Dot to do this? What is the money being spent on? We have three acts that were, um, supporting public transportation. I don't see how these cuts are justified. Where is the, this investment from the federal money going in to D-Dot? I don't see how this is going to reflect and cut service. It doesn't make sense to all riders right here. There's a lot of federal dollars assumed to come in. How can you justify these cuts? So on the driver's side of things, I support a higher wage for the drivers. We need to do a $5 increase starting wage, starting at $20, because that's the only way we're going to keep it. Even if it's 18, because 15 is not enough. We're hemorrhaging drivers. We're in a transit emergency, and I think that's what you.
Thank you, Renard. Your time is up.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Verse.
Good evening. I'm, is someone you can hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good, good. I'm in total agreement just about with the previous speakers. However, not only do I ask where is the money going, I don't see any results of it. And I would like to add the proposed cuts seem to be counterproductive to what D-Dot is supposed to be doing or what it says it's doing or wants to do. Also, I have to agree that the proposed cuts and realignments aren't going to make any difference. And you're saying walk half a mile. What about somebody who's between 75 and 80 with a health condition? All right, who has to walk a so-called half a mile in eight-degree weather in three inches of snow? Do you really care? Would you rather that they just have a heart attack and fall out on the street trying to get to a bus that may not come? Think about it. And Ken, never mind. Carry on. Next speaker.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next hand up is Arthur Vardeman. Mr. Vardeman, it's telling me that your version of Zoom, uh, is not compatible. Perhaps you can call in on your phone or use a different device so we can make sure you have a chance to speak. Uh, in the meantime, Callie Wang.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, folks, I know you've got a tough job today, so I want to thank you for, for coming out here and explaining the change, changes to us. I want to echo what other folks have said that.
Please remember to state your name for the public record.
My name is Callie Wang. I'm a resident of Detroit. What I'm saying is that D-Dot needs to come out with a public plan and the roadmap for exactly when they're going to restore full service and how they're going to do it by hiring and retaining enough operators as soon as possible. And that includes what they're going to do with the 100 million plus dollars of federal aid specifically for D-Dot. So one place to start is that the ATU has called for a wage increase and hazard pay as a way to hire people and keep people on board. That's got to be the most priority, and we've got to know when that will happen. The other thing is, do everything you can to avoid cutting whole routes altogether. You know, there's lots of people for whom that half-mile walk can't be done. So do everything you can to avoid cutting entire routes. Another issue is that because these routes are low frequency, they should be timed to meet all the same time at Rosa Parks, at State Fair, at wherever these routes have transfer points. So that's something that's available now. Other thing is because the frequency on Gratchit, Woodward, and Michigan are so low, we're kind of agreeing with SMART to allow people to ride SMART entirely within the city. So at least they can take advantage of the SMART buses they're going through. But I gotta say, the priority has to be making sure that these cuts are as temporary as possible, and that we've got full service. But end of 2022 is far too long. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you. James Sobolovski.
Hi, folks. Uh, my name's James Sobolovski. I'm District 3 resident, uh, here in Detroit. You know, like others said, this is a really difficult situation, and I'll echo kind of the same thing a different way. If we're not addressing the root cause, we're not truly solving this problem, and the service is going to continue to decline no matter what we do. And, and this isn't a COVID problem. Um, I've been coming to these meetings nearly five years now. Uh, I recognize most of the people on this call, I think. Uh, and we all know that driver shortages have been an ongoing systematic problem with D-Dot for as long as I've been here in Detroit, um, for as long as I can remember. So, you know, I don't know if that's taking contract negotiation in-house with D-Dot, if that's even possible. If that's having tighter relationships with the union, if it's offering different benefits, it's certainly offering more pay. You know, these bus drivers deal with a lot of stuff on these routes that they could go to McDonald's and make the same amount of money essentially, and, you know, not be dealing with conflicts that they're having to deal with. Uh, I am happy to hear that there's a route redesign in progress because that's frankly a long time overdue as well. But again, I can't stress enough that we're not addressing the root cause. This is just, it's like putting a Band-Aid on a, you know, a gunshot. It's not going to really solve this issue.
Thank you. Next hand up I see is Claire Knack Boyd.
Hi, um, I guess I'll just say I agree with, um, everyone who's, who's spoken already. We have all this federal funding coming, and we badly need to get drivers more money so that we can keep them. I, you know, I've been watching the, um, the pullout numbers. They've been too low, and it's just very disappointing to see that the solution to that is to just like reduce the denominator of the fraction, like to cut, to cut buses instead of, you know, trying to fix the, the problem. And, yeah, I'll, I'll also echo those who are a little concerned about, um, let, um, yeah, as, as Larry said, or others have said, um, as Cunningham said, like, getting, uh, the need to get out there and make sure that people know, um, because there's, you know, all of us who, all like 10 of us who check your Instagram are here, um, but people who are going to lose their bus are not in the room, and they need to know. Like, I'm, um, here in Hamtramck, like, though the Clermont doesn't come through, like, this affects our area and the North End, and like, I'd be stunned if any of the community leaders that I know in this area have heard about it, and that's, you know, that's not right. And again, I know you guys are between a rock and a hard place, but I just really encourage you, like, we have to, we have to make a dent in this driver shortage, because this is a cut on top of the COVID cuts. It, it feels like we're back to Dave Bing, and I know none of us want that. So, thank you. It it feels like we're back to Dave Bing, and I know none of us want that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Anthony S. Your hands up.
Hello, my name is Anthony Skinnell. For the record, just wanted to, yeah, agree with the previous speakers. And um just express, you know, the kind of uh anguish and pain that happens when you're standing in the rain for hours. And you think that bus is going to come, and then it doesn't for two hours. And then you're standing in the rain for the second bus, and it just drives right by you full of people. It's it's a real sad feeling. You can't get to work, can't get to the grocery store. And it's going in the wrong direction. I don't know if, I feel like we need the feds to come in here and start overseeing this department or something. Because there's something very wrong, you know, cut services the totally wrong direction. I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next hand up I see is Andre Idiopolo.
Hi, Andre Idiopolo, for the record. Um, there's been a lot of people on this call that know a lot better than me about the technical aspects of what needs to be done. And how these uh solutions for need to be reprioritized. But I just want to say, from a person perspective, from a community perspective, I just hope you're listening and hear the the deep, you know, pain and frustration in these people's voices. And and I know that everybody, the administrators on this call are just trying to do their jobs and do the best they can for the people of Detroit, and I respect that. But we have these meetings, and you just, these things need to be taken upstairs appropriately. I know it's hard for you to sit here and listen to all this, but you know, I just, I challenge you all to to let these people's words resonate with you deeply and give them the service that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Phone number ending one seven zero.
Good evening. This is Lisa Franklin, um, calling in Warriors on Wheels. And I echo the sentiment of every caller before me, and I really have a ball in the pit of my stomach that this is. What you all have for the citizens of the city of Detroit. This is not the first time that service has been cut. And the presentation that we saw tonight appeared to me as if that you're trying to. Make the paperwork catch up with the service, because all of those numbers that we saw on that presentation. Is where the service has been the past year, if not worse. And then for Mr. Patrick to tell us, explaining a map, a red line, a blue line, a a yellow line. This is just so insulting. I've, it's D dot's job to provide the service. Not to cut the service, not to lowball employees, not to whitewash the citizen. It's your job to provide the service. And I agree at now, because when I heard that you were paying providers fifteen dollars and sixty-eight cents to rock to per trip for paratransit. I was appalled. Now you're cutting the service here. Where is the money? Where is the money? I'm just. I don't even know what else to say. I I really don't. Um, I hope. Mr. Oglesby is um lis- listening to this or is going to view a recording, but that presentation was was unacceptable. It really was. And if you, he, the first thing he said was that the service changes are going to happen regardless. That's the first thing he said, that November fifteenth, we're going to see these changes.
Thank you for your comment. Your time is up.
And that isn't what we said. He said.
Okay, Steve, remember, we're gonna, we, yeah, this is the public.
I'll have a translator.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Vardeman, are you able to join us? Um, I'm sorry, it's still giving me the message that you're, you have an older version of Zoom that's not compatible. Uh, Representative Johnson?
Good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I wanted to assure, and first of all, I'd like to say thank you for having having this meeting, but I know it's it's a meeting that. Um, you have to to have in order to comply with the give or take. It sounds like to me that there's so much taking that's going on, and I want to echo one of the callers. Who indicated that he appreciates the staff, because you don't really have a a big say in this. But I'm going to say to all of you, staff included, when you see wrong, you need to talk about it. You need to expose it. There's a lot of wrong going on, and and I will demand, request, ask. From the mayor's office for total transparency. What does that mean? That means we want to know where every single COVID dollar and those dollars that have been appropriated to the city of Detroit. For transportation, however the dollars were appropriated, we want to see every line item. So family, just know, I am listening and I'm here.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Ruth Johnson? One second. Okay, Ms. Johnson?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? I'm sorry, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Ms. Johnson.
Oh, thank you. Um, my name is Ruth Johnson, and I'm a lifelong eternal uh transit user and advocate. And I'm very disturbed and saddened of bus riders who are already people who are sometimes the most burdened and under-resourced, undervalued people. Are treated this way, but my question, first of all, I I also want to state I agree with the previous comments. But my question, I hope I can get a response uh from D dot and the city, is what has been done? Or what is it planning to do to do something other than service cuts? Did you did do an alternative analysis of what other ways? The city of Detroit could better serve bus riders, bus drivers, bus employees, and all of us who depend on those people. I would be interested in knowing um if there's an opportunity to do any type of advocacy on any other levels or within the city. Uh, it seems that whenever, you know, M one uh the or something like that needs money, they go to the foundation community. Let us make sure we exhaust every possible course of action, every avenue. Before you do these harmful, damaging cuts, which I feel are inequitable, because it's again on the people who are already dealing with so much. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Our phone number ending in three eight four. You should be able to unmute yourself from your phone. Okay, we'll come back. Oh, Ted Tansley?
Hi, yes, Ted Tansley here. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
All right, great. Um, well, thanks for taking the time to uh hear our comments and concerns about this, these service changes. Uh, I just wanted to uh reiterate a comment that was stated earlier in that uh we, I think we. We all hope to see a more exact timeline for service restoration and how that connects with the driver retention, the hiring and the training. I know you're saying that uh hoping to start uh restoring service in early twenty.
Mr. Tansley, I believe, yeah, we don't hear your audio.
I think we lost you, Mr. Tansley.
If you can hear us, we can, we'll come back to you. If not, you can also place your comment in the chat. We'll try to come back.
Uh, is phone number ending in three eight four able to join?
Yes, thank you. Could you hear me?
We, we can hear you.
Right, uh, my thing, my thing is, is that I haven't heard that much, but uh also. Only this with the drivers.
Your name, please? Could you tell us your name, please?
Big part.
State your name for the public record, please.
Oh, sorry. Am I, am I Vardeman? Situation is that uh what about? In terms of, you, you're talking about, you know, the product. You may be a part of it, and once again, that money should play a role in it as well. That's all I have.
Okay, and I would like to say some of that, it was a little echoey, so if you don't mind, um, also still sending us that statement, that would be great. Either you can email it or you can place it in the chat, just to ensure that we have it all.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Tansley, do you have a better connection?
Yeah, I was able to get that fixed.
Okay, we can hear you.
All right, great, thanks. So this is Ted Tansley again, uh, resident of Detroit. Uh, just wanted to uh reiterate uh the hope that we can see a more exact timeline. Uh, as you retain drivers, train drivers, and hire more drivers. Uh, my understanding is that we have enough buses, uh, and ridership's really contingent contingent on what level of service you're providing. So I don't really uh see that as being an issue, but the issue is the number of drivers, as we all know. Uh, being able to communicate that transparently to the rest of us and to the community at large, and in all of the ways that you can communicate that. Uh, so that we understand where we're at with the number of drivers that we need. And when we hit certain levels of goals, uh, what level of service we can restore based on the number of drivers. Uh, having that transparently put out there would uh give the community at large goals to achieve. And then we'd also be able to see the level of service improve uh as that happens. Thank you.
Thank you, and I believe that is everyone that had a chance for our public uh record. Um, again, the, you can still make those uh comments in the chat. If you want it for the public record, just please state your name, and that is for the public record. So at this point, we will officially close this, formally close this section of the meeting, which again was for the public uh record. Uh, we'll now have a standby from our, uh, we have scheduling servicing team, um, who can answer some of your call uh comments today. Please make them relevant to, again, the proposed changes. Um, I do want to give, yes, I was going to give you a chance before we, yep.
Yeah, I'd like to clear up a few misunderstandings. When I said there would be a service change on November fifteenth. It, based on comments we received, it might not be exactly what we've presented today. We're here to listen. We're here to take your comment. But we have an emergency operator pick on November fifteenth. And right now, we are putting out all the service we can possibly put out, given, given the number of operators and mechanics that we have. There are some times when we can't get enough buses out, because there aren't enough mechanics to fix them. And sometimes we can't get out enough operators, of course, as we've already said. But uh, uh, but after November fifteenth, we would still put out all the service we can possibly put out, but it would be in a more logical, more consistent way. So you wouldn't have those two-hour waits anymore. And uh, we would take the resources we have now and and allocate them in a more even, more balanced way, so that we don't have. All those problems where people are waiting over an hour for a bus that's supposed to come every ten or twenty minutes. So uh, and uh, there is a new collective bargaining agreement that pays our operators the same as the smart operators. And uh, let's see, so really, we are, you know, we need operators and mechanics, and I can't emphasize that more. Uh, not only, uh, we constantly having people retire as well, and we don't always know far in advance. When people are going to retire. Sometimes they just announce it a week or two before they leave. So uh, sometimes we hire, but then we uh, then people retire, so what we, we're keeping even. But hopefully, if we can hire more people, then we can uh, we can start increasing our our workforce again, back to where we want to be.
Thank you, Steve, for that. Now I'll turn it over to Kristen to call. We do have about ten minutes to go through um some additional comments. And again, we'll still limit your time to two minutes.
Uh, Ms. Stewart, I see your hand up again.
Okay, um, I'm glad you said that you're starting to make, it's smart is uh starting at seventeen, but you needed to to get that out to the public. That you're starting at the same amount as smart is starting at. Um, I can't get to tell you how to please get out and promote the meetings. Uh, I know my team at DPP, we get out uh this past weekend. I know I was, I was out at Fairlane. I know Larry was out. Cunningham passing out flyers just to get people to come in on this meeting, because they don't know about the proposed changes. It's, it's not being said on the news. It's not being said anywhere. And we have so many people that's in the digital divide. They're not on Facebook. They're not on Twitter. They're not on the the media pages to be known. That these changes are being proposed. So please, I mean, it's somebody, i- if it's the transit police, when they they out, maybe they can pass out. While they're sitting there waiting for the next person to get off, the transit police to get off the bus, so they can get to the next stop. Pass out at the, at at your uh transit centers, especially Rosa Park. Have it up on the screen. You know, I mean, the same thing when the state fairgrounds get uh uh up and running. Please post things that D dot is doing, so the residents, essential bus riders know what's going on. We need that information. You know, I don't mind. I love this city. I love transportation. I love housing. I will fight for anything in Detroit, because I am a Detroit, a longtime Detro. Please get the information out to the people. They need to know. I thank you. I know it's not you that's up there today problem, but Oglesby need to listen to us. You know, I mean, Angelica, she she listened and tried to do something. Oglesby sit here and tells us, and he's.
Ms. Stewart, your time is up.
Okay, thank you, and have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you. Uh, Renard, I see your hands up again. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you, um, for the opportunity to speak again. I do understand that you all are doing your jobs and making this announcement. We also ask for increased transparency in terms of how this funding from the federal government is used and will be used, and come up with a plan for service restoration. That's what the public wants to hear, but I also want to echo the sentiments and comments of previous speakers in terms of communication. It's all digital, and if people that are living along Tyreman, Claremount, and also the Junction know that, I mean, the rider is going to be cut. They should know that. How are you going to reach out to them? And aren't service cuts going to be a trend, something permanent, something new? Where the idea is to fund D dot as little as possible, to cut the service to where they think is most profitable, more use. This is a service. We need to ensure that people that want to use this service can ride it. I don't see how these cuts are justified. I think you need to reach out to the public.
I think you need to reach out to the public in terms of how you're going to restore service and not promote reactionary sort of like issues and react to current conditions. How are you going to retain more drivers as well? Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that comment. Uh, and those of you who are on the panel, who are on my staff, you are going to be distributing brochures at buses and major transfer points coming up. We're getting, uh, we have a service, uh, one, uh, uh, front and back, uh, tri-fold, uh, flyer that, uh, that we're going to be handing out. And, uh, and over the next two weeks during the public comment period, uh, we should be handing out a lot of these to people who ride the bus. And, uh, and yeah, that, that is important to get it out to actual riders. And thank you for everyone who attended, and we, 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 we need to get the word out. And we will, there will be, uh, for routes that are proposed for elimination, there will, people will not show up at their bus stop without knowing it. Well, we, we have to put notices at bus stops, we have to put notices along the routes, and, uh, we have to make sure people are informed. I agree.
I see someone who has not spoken yet, so, uh, Devante Montgomery, you can unmute yourself.
Yes, hi, how are you guys doing today?
Hello.
Oh, wow. Um, I actually had to chime in here because speaking for myself, I'm extremely disappointed to hear once again about routes being cut. I don't understand why. I feel that there is genuinely no purpose, no valid purpose for these routes to be cut as individuals such as myself who have to go to work. You know, I'm not one of those individuals who gets on the buses and does absolutely nothing but joyride or anything like that. You know, I'm a paying customer and everything, and I'm just disappointed in regards to this. Like, why, why is there any consideration for these routes being cut in the first place? And another thing I would like to ask is, why are these buses so filthy? These seats are absolutely disgusting. Individuals are constantly getting on the buses without wearing their mask and things of that magnitude. So those things I have reported to DDOT. And, um, as a matter of fact, I just recently reported something, and they fabricated a story and said that the bus wasn't in service. And I know for a guaranteed fact, I got the correct bus number and everything. So I'm, I'm, I'm just honestly fed up with the fabrication as well as these things that are trying, you know, transcending with these services and everything. Like, so could you please explain this to me?
Uh, would anyone like to try to explain that?
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Mike Dolly, I'm calling from the maintenance division. Uh, what I can tell you is, as far as the, uh, cleaning of the vehicles, we do, we do actually clean the vehicles daily. We clean them every night when they come into, into the station. We have cleaning at the locations and sanitizing the locations. We actually install masks on the vehicles when they come out. The person that has observed this not being done, can I ask her to please turn that bus number in with the time? So we can actually follow up to see what happened to that vehicle and why it was in the shape that it's in.
Okay, I can definitely do that. And, um, could you guys, again, please explain to me why you're talking about reducing these routes? If anything, it needs to be times added, to be very honest.
I can explain something. If we have, like I've told you, every bus we can possibly get out with an operator, we are getting out on the street now, okay? And no matter how much money is not the issue, it's that we don't have enough operators or mechanics. That's why the service is not getting out. And it takes months to train operators and mechanics, even if we hire them tomorrow, they won't be trained to go out on the street for several months. So, uh, if we have empty buses or almost empty buses driving around, that hardly pick anyone up all day, and then we have other streets where there are people waiting for buses, standing at the bus stops, uh, we, uh, it just makes sense to put the buses where the riders are. And that's what we are proposing right now to, uh, uh, the, the place, the, the routes that we are proposing to, uh, to suspend service on and have very, very low ridership and are very unproductive. And we have other locations where the buses are getting crowded at times. And, uh, and where there are people standing at the bus stops and waiting for buses that don't show up. So we are not cutting the amount of service on the street. We are making, we are trying to make it appear in a consistent way. And, uh, where there are empty buses driving around, and there are other buses that are just packed, it makes sense to redistribute the service to where people are using it and to have it show up in a more consistent manner. Uh, right now, if there's a bus, it's at six o'clock and six fifteen, it's six, and six thirty, one day the six o'clock might show up and the, and the six fifteen might not. Another day, the six fifteen might show up and the six thirty might not show up. So if we could have it consistent where you can depend on the bus to show up at the same time every day, uh, we feel that would benefit the vast majority of riders.
Okay, okay, I completely understand that. But, um, is there basically any other methods that riders such as myself can utilize to possibly, uh, basically try and not have these changes take place? Because I do understand, but there's always some people who are genuinely in need of this service because they're working. You know what I mean?
Yeah, if we, if the changes don't happen, the service would continue the way it is right now because we would have trips on the schedule that don't get filled. If we're running about seventy-five to eighty percent of the service on certain routes, that service, we wouldn't have, uh, it would continue that way. And I don't think any of us want that to continue.
Okay.
Okay, that, I'm sorry, the time, yeah, the time is, uh, we have time for one person, one additional person who has not spoken, correct?
We, we have one person who hasn't spoken yet, uh, Bro Mac?
Yes, um, that's short for Brother Mac. Um, if you can hear me, my actual name is Reginald Mclemore, and I am an actual DDOT operator of thirty-five years. And the clever device communication system we currently have on the coaches has been in operation for a little over two years. And it has the capability of giving these people that are on the line what they are asking for, but it's never been used to its full capabilities. And that needs to be looked into. As an employee, I had to work real hard and put forth extra effort to find out about this meeting today. And I'm an employee, and I challenge anybody from management on the line right now to go into either terminal and show me where it was posted about this information. So if I, as an employee, don't know, of course, the public does not know. And furthermore, for you guys in the, um, public that's on the line, I'm trying to make this quick. But you're cutting the service, and I perfectly understand, I'm not arguing that point. But if you cut a line down to every sixty minutes, we still have the issue to where we're running the coaches that we do have so hard until we will still have a problem where when a coach goes down, now you've got a coach every two hours, as you say, you're trying to avoid, because we're running the good coaches that we have fifteen to twenty hours a day without being serviced in between. So there are going to be situations where we're going to have the same problem in November as we have now. Thank you for listening to me.
Steve, uh, do you want to make any closing remarks? Or anyone from the team?
Just, uh, want to thank everyone for being here, and, uh, we are setting up meetings with the operators at both of the bus terminals over the next, uh, four weeks. So, um, we will hope to see all of you there, and, um, and the service changes are one of the items that you can bring up with us. Uh, okay, and, uh, she's saying, are you not going to take questions? Uh, so, uh-
Oh, we were, we were taking them, uh, we were just taking them.
Yeah, we were just taking them.
Yeah, we were just taking them, and we did go through a round. Um, again, comments will continue September fifteenth. We went for our today. Our primary purpose today was to get those public comments on the record. Uh, so we did allow that opportunity, but again, it, the deadline is the September fifteenth. So if you do have another comment you'd like to make for the record, um, you may do that. You can email d dot comments at detroitmi.gov. Or again, we mentioned that you can call customer service, please state that you are calling for, uh, public comment for the record, uh, nine three three thirteen hundred. So that is going to conclude our meeting for tonight. Again, thank everyone for joining us. This presentation will be available on our website soon. And as, uh, Steve mentioned, we'll have brochures, the teams will be out passing out, um, additional information physically as well. So thank you all and stay safe.